Good morning. The Committee of the Whole is called to order. We will be addressing two bills today. Bill number 99-36 LS, introduced by Vice Speaker Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, co-sponsored by Senator James Moylan, Senator Jose Pito Terlay, myself, Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Clinton Regel, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Tony Adah. And then we will proceed, after that bill, we will proceed to Bill 121-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing, introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Vice Speaker Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. But before we do that, my colleagues, the rules of engagement. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel, with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. A member who uses that member's time on a question, uses all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time used was not used. That's in conformity with Section 1.02d3. After completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill to discuss. Amendments to each bill will be entertained after the two rounds of questions. After we complete the amendments in the bill, we will proceed to the next bill. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared Google Drive folder labeled 6.30.21 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, 36gglsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. My colleagues, please take note of that. If you don't have it amended, let's not just keep calling recess so you can load it. Let's get it on track and let's move on this. After we complete the amendments to each bill, then I'll entertain a motion, after both bills, then I'll entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report out the bills as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. I will now call upon the panel, and we have the panel today. We have, to my immediate right, we have the Director of Department Administration, Mr. Ed Byrne. We have the Deputy Director of the Department of Corrections, Mr. Camacho, and his, I guess he would be called the Superintendent of DOC, Major Uggan. And I have, to my immediate left, I have the Mr. Steve Guerrero, the Director of the Office of Finance and Budget. The Director of BBMR was not able to make it today, he's under the weather, but Mr. Byrne is able to and capable of covering the questions that may be posed to the Administration. And now, as the Sergeant Arms, to please ask the panel to please rise and be sworn in.
Can you raise your right hand? Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Chair, you're on the road.
Thank you. We will begin first with the author of the bill, Vice Speaker Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, to give her opening statement of Bill number 99-36 LS. Ma'am?
Sisusmaasi, Mr. Chair, and Manana Sisus to my colleagues and all those present here this morning, to the Administration, thank you for coming this morning, to the folks of Department of Corrections. I had introduced Bill 99-36 at the request of the Public Defender's Office, Public Defender Service Corporation. Both Kathy Gogui and Stephen Hattori, the Executive Director and the Administrative Director, had informed me that due to the new policy implemented at DOC, all calls now have to be done through the Paytel system. As a result, many of the indigent clients cannot afford the exorbitant costs for Paytel or unable to contact their families to load money to their Paytel accounts so that they can contact their attorneys. The Public Defenders informed me that a percentage of the revenues collected by Paytel is to be remitted to the Government of Guam. They had asked me to see if we can use those funds to provide free calling services for indigent clients to contact their attorneys. We had also contacted DOC to verify this, and I also have with me the agreement between Paytel and the Government of Guam, which also shows that 15% commission on net revenues generated by coinless payphones and 10% commission on the next revenues generated by coin-operated payphones be remitted to the Treasurer of Guam within 45 days after each quarter of the calendar. As someone who has worked at the Public Defender Service Corporation and now is a lawmaker who took an oath to uphold the Constitution, I am of the conviction that we must ensure that the fundamental constitutional rights of those detained and incarcerated are protected, and that's why I introduced this bill, to make sure that there is a mechanism in the books to ensure inmates can contact their legal counsel. I do not think DOC was barring inmates from calling their lawyers. With COVID, the restrictions for visitation and the difficulty it placed on many families to work with the Paytel system's methods of loading money into an inmate's account, this bill just makes sure that we protect the constitutional rights of those accused and protect the integrity of the criminal justice system, so nobody can one day say they want to appeal their case because they were not afforded legal counsel. I know that Major Anton Uggan had done an interview supporting this bill, and I would like to read a quote from him to demonstrate why we needed to do this. This issue is, the issue is that some of the inmates don't have money, they don't have family support, or a lot of money to put into their phone system, so how do you give them access to their attorney? And who pays for it? That's the next cost. Who should pay for those inmates who don't have the money to pay for their phone calls? I've also submitted an amendment, which I believe has been submitted, and all it does, Mr. Chair, is to change the name from the Inafamalik Fund to the Inmate Phone Access Act. Furthermore, our office received a letter signed by the Director, Mr. Joseph Carbelito, I think that was yesterday. The letter supports the measure but requests that the service only be afforded to indigent clients. I have submitted an amendment to that extent, and another recommendation was that the funds be administered by the Public Defender's Office, and I appreciate Department of Corrections' insights. However, I would respectfully decline to amend the bill such, because as reflected in the purchase order for this service, the agreement between the vendor and DOC, DOC also is the one to keep any records pertaining to this contract, and they should be the one to monitor and administer this program. Given that the facility is at Department of Corrections and they are the signatory on the contract, I believe that it would be better served to keep it at DOC, as ultimately they have to facilitate and coordinate an inmate who wants to call their attorney. I had my staff also reach out to Public Defender Stephen Hattori from the PDSC's office, and he concurred that it would be better served if it is kept under DOC's purview, as the Public Defenders only represent about 85% of the indigent clients, and then you have the alternate Public Defenders, and if there is still conflict, it goes to a court-appointed attorney. This way, the Public Defender's Office is defending a client who's also charged with another individual who's being defended by the APD or a court-appointed attorney. We eliminate any potential conflicts and preserve the integrity of all inmates and their fair access to their constitutionally granted right to representation. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I have already had my staff send the DOC letter to the PH material, and I kindly asked that it be included in the session journal as well. And as noted, I do have the two amendments to change the title, to make it from the Inafamalik for Inmates Act to the phone, the Inmate Phone Access. And then that second amendment that I want my colleagues to know, because I know that we probably won't be doing the amendments until after everybody on the panel leaves, is to make sure, to work with what the recommendations were, is to put the word "indigent" in several different places in front of inmates and detainees, and this is just to make sure that those who qualify were only those within the indigent population at DOC. So those are the two amendments. It's been given in the drive, but also just wanting to make sure that the information that we got from Department of Corrections that was dated earlier in March, and also now one in June, that it be uploaded for an appendage to the committee report, Mr. Chair. So I think those are things that I may need to come back to, or if, on the amendments, but at least for the information that was received by DOC, if it could be included in the committee report.
All right, and thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. For my colleagues, the information provided is for your information, and then as you move around and ask the questions, at least you have that in your mind, that those are, will be proffered amendments after the panel's been dismissed. That being said, we will be...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. We will begin with the two rounds. We will start with Senator Clinton Regel, and then work our way to the front, and then we'll just continue on. All right, Senator Regel, do you have any questions or comments for the panel in reference to Bill 99-36?
Not at this time.
Senator Terlay, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise in support of this bill, but there needs to be some kind of rules and regulation regarding, because, you know, who's going to pay for the Paytel? Is it going to be borne out of the Department of Correction budget, or is it going to be given to some source of funding? And I'm pretty sure that we need to really come out with the rules and regulation on some of the restrictions, and like I said, I rise in support of this bill, but we need to know, you know, the time limit that is given to an inmate to call somebody, call, you know, any of the family, but, you know, that's, I'm just waiting, maybe the Department, the Director can give us some kind of outline on just how this thing is going to work, the limitation on the calls, and who's going to fund it, and things like that.
All right. That's your question. I would ask the Deputy Director, Mr. Camacho, or even the Department Administration, Mr. Byrne, to answer that, but we'll begin with the Department of Corrections.
Okay. Thank you, Senator. As far as the access to the phone system, each inmate has 60 minutes per day to access the phone, not including the attorney calls. How is it paid for? It's based on the revenues that are being generated from the, when the inmates are paying through the phone system, and a certain percentage goes to DOC. We actually don't spend any money of our own. We're getting revenue from that. And so, and by the way, we just want to mention that we are in support of this bill, including the amendments that Senator Barnes has mentioned. So essentially, sir, it's just the monitoring of who's considered indigent is what we would like to ensure. And so from that, if the alternate Public Defender or the Public Defender's Office, and even court-appointed attorneys could probably fall into that category, because they may not be under the Public Defender or the alternate Public Defender's Office. So we could, if anything, those offices can give us a list of names that they represent, and that way we can monitor. And then initially, the Director wanted Public Defenders to handle that account and pay for it, but I think after further discussion, we agreed that with Senator Tina Munia Barnes, where we will pay for it, but we just need to have accountability as to who is in the, who are in the clients, who are the clients for the Public Defender's Office and the alternate Public Defender's Office.
So, Mr. Deputy Director, how are you going to classify indigent out of the total inmates that are up at DOC?
That will be up to the court, sir, when they do go up before the magistrate and they are assigned an attorney, and that will be up to the courts to determine that. And I believe what happens is that the probation's office reviews their finances, and there's a report that is done, and that will determine who is indigent or not. I mean, not everybody in the population are considered indigent. We have a total of 563 inmates and 213 detainees, so, you know, that's a significant amount. So we do have, we do get revenues every quarter from this Paytel system.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Director. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Senator Blas, do you have any questions? No, Senator Teller, do you have any questions on Bill 99-36?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to the panel and good morning to my colleagues. You know, I attended the public hearing, and some of the questions that I had were not being able to be answered, so I'm really happy that we're here today to get those answers. First of all, it was something that was done already prior to COVID, you know, providing these phone calls to the inmates, especially when they had to call their attorneys. And coming to find out too, that there is a mechanism in place that when you're having these calls to your attorneys, given that avail, to make these calls, that they cannot be recorded. So that's, that's really, it's good to know, you know, client, attorney privilege confidentiality is very important. And then it was said that, you know, I asked the question about what happened prior to COVID, and the inability for inmates to have the opportunity to make phone calls to families, especially if they're given the privilege to do so, you know, while they're incarcerated. So can you explain what happened prior to COVID and how the inmates were able to make these phone calls without using any kind of payment that they had to fork out, or?
Okay. I'm going to have Major Uggan.
Thank you, Deputy Director.
Good morning, Senator.
Good morning, sir.
So we've had this Paytel system for more than 15 years, all right? Now, the attorney issue just surfaced around November. In March of 2020, the Paytel system that we had for 15 years, the system basically crashed. It outlived its usefulness, and we had to get a new system going. So from about March to September, we had no inmate Paytel phone system. Inmates were simply using the landline, or the phones themselves were still there, but the switch that made it go into the Paytel was shut off. So basically, every phone became a landline, and inmates were allowed to go up there and just pick it up, they can dial anyone they wanted to, and there was just no way of monitoring it. There was no charging, they were, Paytel absorbed all the telephone line fees that GTA or DOCOMO were charging. So we got the system back up in September. And then what happened was, you know, we started noticing that on the old system, yes, they did not call their attorney, they used the landline. So what it was is, the housing unit has one government landline. The inmate will go up to the officer, says, "Officer, I need to call my attorney." And so what the officer is supposed to do is pick up the phone, dial the number, say, "Attorney so-and-so, your client would like to speak to you, do you have a minute?" More times than not, the attorneys were not available, because they would have to call at a certain time. But if the attorney's available, they put the inmate on the phone, so the inmate would stand there, basically in front of the control room, in front of the officer, on the only telephone line that is available, or sometimes in the control room, standing next to the officer, using the phone. And so there was concern about confidentiality, the officer there, inmate being in the control room, and all these other issues.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, can you get a little bit closer to your mic? Thank you so much.
Plus, Senator, we found out that the inmates were using the disguise of calling their attorney to not call their attorney. They would, sometimes attorneys, they'll say, someone will call and say, "Yeah, this is attorney so-and-so for your inmate so-and, this and that," and the officer would get the inmate, put him on the phone without actually verifying who that call was from. And we found a few that were doing illegal activity, okay? They were using that as a way of illegal activity. And we found that out, because on Paytel, I actually monitored it, and I heard the inmates tell that, when, he says, "What do you say when you call here?" "Oh, I say I work for attorney so-and-so." "Okay, call me at 3:30." And so at 3:30, I called that unit, the line was busy, I called the officer, says, "Who's on that phone?" He says, "Oh, it's so-and-so with their attorney." I said, "That's not their attorney." Okay? And I found out he was doing, through the Paytel again, drug transaction, okay? In addition, at this time, the COVID was spreading, starting to develop in our facility. So at that point, we said, "You know what? We got to have the officer stop using the phone with the inmates and sharing their phone." Plus, there were security issues, and the Paytel was there, and so we said, "Okay, you need to use your Paytel to call the attorney." Now, in the Paytel system, Senators, attorney calls can be free, but the attorney has to contact, and I've done all that in the policy, I emailed the Guam Bar, the policy, I emailed the alternate Public Defender, all the attorneys, I emailed them the SOP on what needs to be done. The attorney needs to call, make contact with the off-island vendor who runs the system. That off-island vendor will verify that that is an attorney by getting their bar license number and their business head, business letterhead, and all these other things. Once it's been verified, the vendor will go inside, and whatever number the attorney says, "I do not want recorded," they will go into the system, and so that the number, and every time an inmate or somebody picks up the phone and calls that particular number, you will have a log that it was called, it will show how many minutes, but there will be no recording of it. And so once we started that, I have about 80 attorneys right now that have went through that process. So the next question becomes, when an inmate with, you know, that very little money, how do they reach their Public Defender? When I said, "Now you got to use that phone system over there," and some don't have money. So what we were doing for those that don't have money is, they say, "Sir, I need to speak my attorney." I say, "Okay, we're going to make an arrangement, we take him out of the housing unit, because there's only one phone in there, and we don't want him in the control room, to another location, and we'll coordinate a telephone attorney phone call." Right? Now, when we talked to the Public Defender, Stephen Hattori, there's another way we can do it, where the, and so what we did for two months, we worked with Paytel, Mr. John Lintiako, and said, "Okay." Because we had no baseline of how much these free phone calls would cost, so we said, "Okay, we're going to work with the Public Defenders, and we're going to make the 475-3100 free." Right? So when the inmate calls it, the Public Defenders will hear the recording, and it will say, "This is a collect call from, to accept the charges," and so they did that, and they did it for about a month, and I think the average cost was about 400, right? But Public Defender was not charged, Mr. Lintiako on Paytel absorbed the cost for that, all those calls for those two months, because we needed some data to know just basically how much these free phone calls will cost us. And so it's about 450 a month, I believe, for, to call the alternate Public Defender and the Public Defender. So for those two months, every time an inmate called using their phone system, called 475-3100 or the number for the alternate, the alternate Public Defender, those calls were free to the inmates. There was no charges to the inmates. Now the question is, we have some, the inmates now, that of course alternate Public, they're, and right now, when they call, they use their own Paytel phone accounts. So if their parents or their mom or their family put $50, and they call their attorney, it charges it from their phone account. If they do not have a phone account, which I can verify and several other officers can verify, we will make other arrangements for them to speak to their attorney. We never deny any inmate or detainee the ability to speak to their attorney. The only thing that's a little different is the time, because when it's in the unit, they just pick up the phone, the phone's open at 7:30 in the morning till 8:30 at night, the phone's available, each unit has several phones, they can just go up there and pick it up at any time and call. When they don't have money, it takes a little bit more effort on our part, because I have to coordinate them to get out of the unit and go to another area to use the phone. And that's fine, but, you know, the, we still lack security as far as being able to track it, having a record of the phone calls being made, how long, you know, and so ultimately, with this bill, I think it will work perfectly, that anyone that calls the alternate Public Defender or the Public Defender or their court-appointed attorney, those numbers, we will then work with those agencies and identify which number will be free, basically, and then the bill will come back to DOC, and we would use revenue from the appropriations to pay for it. All the revenues go into our revolving fund, as it stands now, and so all we would do is basically get the bill from Miss Paytel, or from Public Defenders, however they set up that formula, and then we would pay it. But, you know, at the end of the day, it would be easier for the inmates, because all they have to do is go pick up the phone and call between 7:30 and 8:30, and they don't have to worry about it being deducted from their account. Each call right now is 15 cents a minute, so when you speak on the phone for 20 minutes, that's $3. That's $3 off their account. Now, the system now is actually even easier for families to put money, because before you had to get that little white phone card, and, you know, they scratch out the back and then they, no more. You can put money online, you can go online and put money, or you can go to the Paytel office in Tizen, and they have a kiosk there that the family can go there and deposit money into. Mr. Lintiako is working on putting a kiosk in somewhere in the northern, I think, that's a 24-hour location, so other family members will be able to do that in the future. But in general, that's how the Paytel system works, and again, we are in support of this, and this will help us operational-wise at least, so we will never have to coordinate another out-of-the-unit phone call, right? Inmate just picks up the phone, plus, if there's ever a challenge that I never got to call my attorney, all I got to do is go to the inmate phone record or run that number, 475-3100, run it, and I can get an entire report of who called that number, how long it was called, how many minutes there were on it, and what was the cost. And we can cross-check with the bills that came in and all these other things. So the system is actually pretty easy, it's not a complicated process to run. We just needed the permission, I guess, to pay it, right? And that's what I think this bill does. I hope I answered your question, I'm sorry.
Very thorough. Thank you so much for that. It's a clear picture, you know, there are issues that I'm also seeing within this with, and that is, you know, just not enough guards every time somebody wants to use the phone, you know, because I think they would have to be monitored or taken to that place. If I'm not mistaken, then the bill that is accumulated, is accumulated through the Public Defender, because they're the one that has to receive this collect call coming from... defender, because they're the one that has to receive this collect call coming from DOC, from their client. So what they're initially doing is taking that bill and giving it to DOC to pay. So, did you ever ask why public defender can't just, in their budget, request for that $425 a month to cover those expenses, instead of throwing it on DOC's lap to pay for?
Yes, Senator, yeah, they did not, again, that data that we got was for two months. I anticipate that that particular thing will go down in the future, because we have opened up the doors for attorneys to actually visit their client. The average telephone call before an inmate and an attorney is about three to five minutes. And most times, attorneys don't really go into detail with their client over the phone. My experience is, they mostly do it in person, but we've seen actually a decrease in requests to call attorneys, because more attorneys are coming into the facility to actually meet with their clients, as opposed to what was going on earlier this year.
And I hear that, I'm sorry, Chair, but I hear that that's a mechanism that most inmates prefer than talking to their, yeah, am I correct on that? They prefer to have a face-to-face with their attorney to discuss with them. So, that would also cut down on the cost of these phone calls. And if the, if a public defender were to fork out the bill, then they would probably have more attorneys coming down to DOC to meet face-to-face, so there's no cost being incurred that way. I mean, COVID has put us in a situation, and it's taught us many things on how we can initiate certain things that were tedious, or cost a whole lot of money, you know, we're learning. I'm not really gonna get so much into, I'll wait for the next round to discuss about these privileges that are given to the inmates using the PayPal at any time, because it's very, that could be a different discussion. But, you know, thank you for that, and if, so my question to you and Deputy Director, if DOC, I mean, if public defender decides to shoulder this cost, do you still need this bill?
I'm not sure the process in which we would do it, but, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we are in support of it, but again, that would be determined on how we can monitor and who is identified as indigent, and that's the complexity of it all. I'm not sure how it would work. But, we're open to any kind of, you know, solutions, but as it stands right now with this bill, I think we're okay with it.
And even if they decide to shoulder it, and DOC has no payment?
I believe that would be okay, but again, I'm not sure how the process would be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks, Bob. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Teller. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up. I know Senator Teller probably will ask us in the next round, but I did want to ask, with regards to the phone privileges that are given to inmates, I have no argument about the need for inmates to get in contact with their attorneys to address their cases. But what are the current requirements for an inmate to be able to access their phone and communicate? Because I know you've had issues in the past, obviously, with regards to smuggling of cellphones. I assume you consider cellphone a contraband coming into the prison? And how do you handle this also for your officers? I mean, are they prohibited from bringing their cellphones on duty when they are out in the yard with the prisoners? Because I know that is a concern. I mean, a lot of interesting things can be discussed on these, on these cellphones, and I assume you have a desire, for a whole bunch of reasons, to want to control that process with inmates. So, if I was an inmate at DOC, aside from wanting to talk to my attorney, what other phone privileges would I have, and is it dependent upon what my status is?
Okay, Senator, so, when an inmate, when someone first comes in, let's say an overnighter, someone just got arrested last night, if they have an existing account in the system, all we gotta do is turn it on, because when they leave, we turn it off. So if they had, let's say they left and they had 20 bucks in the account, the money stays there. So if they come back, we turn on the button, their account is now active. If they don't have any accounts, their first time, they don't have any money, we do to them an opportunity to use the landline to call their family, at least one phone call, one 10-minute phone call in the beginning, to let the family know that where they're at, what's going on, and, "By the way, my phone system is being created, this is what you need to do to get me some money for my phone." I have the SOP on the website, and, you know, so it's available for the family if they need to know the instructions and what needs to do, what they need to do. Every inmate, when they come in, we create them, it says they've never had an account, we create them their account, it takes less than a minute. They get a 10-digit PIN number, and when they go in and they activate their account for the first time, they gotta create a four-digit PIN that they create, not us, they create it. So now, there's two sets of PIN to access their account. So every inmate, when they're gonna use the phone, if there's money loaded, they go up to the phone, the phone's open at 7:30 in the morning till 8:30 at night, the whole system shuts down at 9:00. Right? I leave a little leeway in case there's an emergency and they need to talk longer. And every unit has several phones in the unit, there's not just one. Some have four phones for the different blocks that are there, and they have a sign-up log so that, you know, the inmates can sign up and say, "Hey, I want to use the phone at 9:30 or 10:30." And they're allowed a total of 60-minute phone calls. That's not including their attorney, 60 minutes. So each phone call can go for a maximum of 20 minutes, and then after 20 minutes, the system will say, you know, "You exceeded your time, goodbye." But, they can pick the phone right back up again if there's nobody after them and talk again. Or they can break it down to, you know, five, 10-minute ones, whatever the case may be. So they have ways to communicate with their family. Some of these inmates, Senator, some of these inmates, they have money in their account, $100, $200, I mean, there's, because anybody can really deposit. I mean, you can even deposit from the mainland. I mean, you could have a loved one here, and you're in the mainland, just go to the website, like a PayPal-type thing, and upload $100, $200, so they have that. If the inmate really has no family, for example, I got a phone call from one family, they haven't spoken to them, I checked, he had no money, nothing, the family was off-island, I made, I had to verify first, then I made special arrangements for him to call the family, to at least speak to the family. On a case-by-case basis, we can, we have done that, just to make sure they talk to their family. Other options for family, of course, is they still write letters, you know, we still have a mail system, and they can still write letters and things like that to communicate with their family. I try not, we're very strict on the landline, because the landline, we cannot monitor it, and they're sharing it with the officers, and, you know, all kinds of other things can happen. Plus, you know, we've had it where the inmate will be on the phone, there'll be a fight, or they need the officer's attention, but the officer's busy with the inmate in the control room, so he cannot respond, you know, because he's occupied. So, we try to get away from that and go to the Paytel as much as possible. And if, case-by-case, we will make, they write a remedy quest, inmates are allowed to do a remedy quest, and says, "You know, dear so-and-so, I don't have access, I haven't spoken to my mom, can you help me?" And then we will do what we can on our side to accommodate them. I've had several families call me, and I would email them the policy, and I would email them the step-by-step instructions, or the link, the link to do it, you can even do it on your phone. All you need is the link, and you can actually do it on a smartphone, to put money into their account and all those different, and that's different from the previous system. The previous system, you could only get a card, and you get the card, and you scratch the number on the back, and you load it to your system. Right? And you had to have the card. You no longer have to do that. The system is a lot more easier for families to do what they need to do, and for the inmates to use it, than before. And before, in order to use it, you had to give me the list of numbers that you wanted to call, I would have to go into your account, put in those numbers, and that took a lot of manpower, so that you can call those numbers. Now, they don't have to do that. They can just pick up the phone and they can call. If you receive a call from an inmate from DOC, you will hear a recording, and if you accept it, you press the accept, and that's the only time that you and that inmate will hear voice-to-voice. Right? Is if you accept the phone call. There's also mechanisms that if you're calling a number and they don't answer after four times, the number is blocked. It's called a harassment feature. So if the family don't answer it, they can't call for 24 hours that number. So we tell them, you know, "Don't just keep calling and hanging up and trying to call, you know, because you can get the number blocked." If a family wants the number blocked, they can call us and say, you know, "I don't want him calling, we can go in there, I can put a lock on a certain number," and nobody can call that number from the system until we release it. So it's a pretty good system. Again, the only concern was, who shall pay for the attorney phone calls? Right? And one reason why this bill is that, they talked about giving it to the public defenders or giving it to the court. If the bill is only $450 a month, or $1,800 a quarter, and GovGuam receives a certain amount of money, I want to keep the extra of DOC, you know, to go in our revolving fund to cover other costs, because that's where the money currently goes. So, I don't, I think it's really small, a small cost, just to ensure that inmates do have access to their attorneys, and there's no issue.
Aside from that, I just wanted to ask, are there any restrictions on who they can call? I mean, I appreciate you elaborating on these protective measures, you know, features that are in the call. But, I mean, do you know if they're calling their family? Do you know if they're calling a victim that they may have, you know, been engaged or involved with that may have led them to prison? I mean, that would be a concern. I mean, I don't have a problem they want to keep in contact with their family members, but do you have any way of determining who they're calling, so that they're not accessing the phone and could be calling to harass someone that they were involved with that may have led to them being incarcerated? Because, you know, a lot of battered people, you know, mentally, they are, sometimes, even though they know they're being harmed because of the situation that they're in, and maybe the abuse that they've suffered, you know, you think the natural trigger would be, "Oh, I'm not answering that call, I'm not taking that call," but some people have that type of influence over a victim, and so I'm just curious, and I just want to make sure that we're not opening the door for those type of events to occur, where, you know, someone who's been victimized, or family that's been victimized by an individual, and they're incarcerated for that crime, have the ability to reach out and access, you know, law-abiding people in our community, because we're allowing them that access? That would be a concern, that certainly I would have. And I'm just curious, how does DOC address those type of issues?
Yes, Senators, again, there is ways, we have about 2,000 or so phone calls going out of that facility every day on the Paytel system. There's about over 2,000 phone calls. And so we do have someone that monitors them, and can monitor these phone calls as they're coming out, and not everything, obviously, we can't, we don't have the manpower for that. But, again, the, if an inmate calls somebody he shouldn't, first, the first defense, of course, is, that party will not hear that inmate unless he, she, he or she accepts the call. Right? You have to accept the call. Right? We've had a few inmates that did that, and the family would call us and say, "Hey, you know, he's calling this number." And so I would go into the system, or someone I designate, and we can put that number, and it'll be blocked. So, even if he uses somebody else's account, let's say his buddy gave him a PIN number, and was not supposed to, but he shared the PIN number, and so he uses somebody's account to try to disguise that it's not under his name, we can block the telephone number, so they can't call, nobody can call that number from the system.
But you're saying it's possible, though. It is possible for an inmate who may have been engaged as to why they're incarcerated to, because some individuals that have this in their mind, there's no boundaries for them. And even the fact for a family or a victim to receive a call, even if they, you know, they don't accept it, just that action in and of itself can be very unsettling, because they're gonna feel they're not protected, you know, even though this individual may be incarcerated, this individual can still reach out to me, this individual can still call my number, and even though I don't press the button to accept the call, the fact that that call can be accessed to them, can still be viewed as another form of intimidation or harassment. So, that's the kind of stuff I would have a concern with, because I never really knew you could call all the time out of the prison, and that, you know, the fact that I understand the need to call the attorney, I understand perhaps to engage with your family, but I would be concerned about any inmate trying to abuse that process, and again, reach out, harass, or, you know, I'm trying to figure out how I smuggle in the next contraband, and how we're gonna do it, and who's gonna bring it, and what it's gonna be in, and how we're gonna receive it, which I know for you up there, you're having to deal with that practically on a daily basis, because that communication is there. So, those are the kind of things that I would be concerned about, engagement, and the ability to access a phone, and, you know, are those type of things happening? Because I would be concerned, you know, if I was on the receiving end of that call and that individual, I'm a victim of that circumstance, that individual's been incarcerated, and then that individual still has access, even if it was one time, it can be very unsettling, and I don't think people that are victimized in the community, you know, want to have to experience that at all. So, I just think, if you're saying it's monitored, and I appreciate the fact that as soon as you're notified, you can address it, but I was not aware of it till this moment, that that's possible to happen with access to telephone communication.
Yes, Senator, and again, like you said, once we identify it, or we get a complaint, there's been several, I would refer to the AG's office, because there'll be like court orders, stay away, and things like that. So I have referred a few to the AG's office. We also have our own internal discipline on the inmate, so I would shut off his phone, we could restrict him internally, discipline him internally, and with the exception of attorney calls, we can restrict him and do that. We haven't had a few, too many of them with the Paytel system, we had quite a few when they were using the landline, right? And we had no record of it, because, "No, I didn't do it, sir, I never did," and we had no record, he said, she said, and then we had no way of, when the AGs calls us, "Hey, we don't know, sir, it's a landline, we don't have no record." But with the Paytel, we can actually print what number he called, and so I think the message has got to most of the inmates, and I have had very little, if any, in the last few months of any kind of complaint about harassing phone calls. But, you know, it is possible. There may be one or two that that does happen, and we address it as quickly as we find out about it.
And just one last question, how do you monitor these calls?
Well, the system, actually, Senator, is very easy. It's web-based, so I can even get on the system right now on my phone, and I can listen to phone calls. I can email it to myself, it's only like a small MP3, I can, I have my computer, I have another officer that monitors it. Right? And we, several officers in our department can monitor, the warden can monitor it, I mean, it's just, we can actually, you know, sometimes at night, I can be on it at night at home, and I'll just be randomly listening to phone calls as they went out during the day, just to see what's going on, and, you know, I can screenshot it, highlight it, take the number, and research the history and all that, right from my phone, which is a lot better than what we could do in the past, because I could not, in the past, the older system, I could only access the system on my computer. Right? But now, with the way the system is designed, and like I said, I can get on there right now and turn it up, and we can even listen to a live phone call right now, that's going on right now. I can hear one that went through, or one that's living live right now, I can just go in here and just hit it, and we can listen to it right away.
And, by the way, Senator, we have been able to intercept, you know, illegal activities, you know, through that telephone system where people are trying to introduce contraband and all sorts of other, you know, illicit drugs. So, it has helped us tremendously, even in court.
Mm-hmm. Yes. I mean, I appreciate it, I have to give them credit for effort, you know? But at the other end, I mean, you know, we have an expectation that if someone has been, you know, incarcerated, and they're there for a reason, I mean, we just want to ensure the safety of the public as well. I understand, again, I have no objections to the legislation in providing access for our inmates to be able to engage in the legal process with their attorneys, and certainly talk to their family. Again, I just want to make sure that there are measures in place to protect the rest of the community, and those that have been victimized, you know, from any form of harassment, you know, when someone has been incarcerated for a certain crime. But thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate your response and your elaboration on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. As Madam Vice Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
First, Mr. Chair, be short, just two short questions, and one may be a reiteration of what was just said earlier. Do you think that monitoring communications with the outside world is crucial to stopping the importation of contraband or drugs to the prison?
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry, what's the question?
Do you think that monitoring the communications with the outside world is crucial to stopping the importation of drugs and contraband? So you think it's important? Would you like to add, Major?
Yes, Senator, I mean, the system, again, is clearly, it tells every phone, every person that uses that phone, every time they use it, that it's being recorded, it's a standard message that's received, that both parties will hear. Right? And it tells even you, if you're receiving a call, it is being recorded and subject to monitoring and all these different things. It even says that if you're an attorney, and you want your number to do not record, this is what you gotta do, call this number, and it gives you that. And every time you use the phone, that same recording is played over and over, so if you use the phone 100 times, you got it. In addition, I went a step further, and I put signs on every phone in the housing unit next to it that says, "These phone calls are being recorded and subject to monitoring." Right? Just so they don't say, "I didn't know." And we make sure it's that, and then we do monitor it, and we have, Senator, intercepted some contraband, prevented some coming in, we've got some after the fact, because we'll find something and say, "What happened here?", and we'll go back and listen to other phone calls, and we've, sometimes we've been able to intercept. Uh, sometimes on our part, it's hard because even if I hear something, I, I, you know, I work in DOC, my jurisdiction is DOC, I can't search a vehicle, I can't go after somebody. But I also work with other law enforcement agencies and if I hear something that's kind of, you know, that would probably involve the community, I will contact them and says, hey, you need to listen to this or hear, you need to see this and, and stuff. And so, we've had a few. Uh, again, as you, there was a case recently where a federal detainee was, we gave the recordings and it turns out, they played it in court for the district judge and it turns out he was, he was smuggling, trying to attempt to smuggle drugs into their Ganya lockup, right? And so, it's very critical that we do that. That's how we even busted our own officer bringing in stuff when the inmates on the phone said, you know, he's leaving now, you know, make sure you meet him here. And I'm like, what the heck is this? And so, we investigated further, we got the officer as he was coming to work because we can hear it, we, we heard what they were saying, and we busted the officer coming into work with the contraband. So, this phone system is very, it's a very vital tool to our operations. When they use the landline, we have no way of knowing what was being said or who they're talking to. I mean, for all I know, they're two-waying the call and we don't even know. And, and so, this system has been very beneficial to us as far as, uh, and again, it's, you know, before you use the control phone, you have to wait until the officer is available to take care of you. Because if the officer's on the line or he's busy, you need to stand by. But with the phone being open the way it is, from seven thirty, there's just never really a backlog. And again, it closes at eight thirty, so inmates have all the time to go up there and pick up the phone and call their family or their attorney or whoever they need to call. And most of the time, ma'am, not, Senators, nothing happens, but there are, every time and then, we get one little inmate who stepped out of line and then we can go and deal with it accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Major. And then the second question is, based on the contract that DOC signed with Paytel, DOC is the one to receive the fifteen percent.
Right.
So, based on quick math, if it costs four hundred dollars a month for this indigent program based on your numbers, fifteen percent would mean that Paytel would need to make two thousand six hundred and sixty-six a month? Do you think that Paytel makes at least the two thousand six hundred and sixty-six a month?
Yes.
Yes?
I believe, Senator, I believe, Senator, that, I don't have the, that the last quarter check we got was for nine thousand dollars. Uh, we didn't get a lot in 2020, though, of course, remember, the system went down in March. From March to September, we received no revenues from, because the system was down and we didn't get anything. But now that it's back up, I think the last check we got was approximately about nine thousand. So, and that's for a quarter. So, if, if eighteen hundred is put aside for attorney phone calls, we still have that extra couple thousand to run DOC oper-, you know, put into our revolving fund for other DOC obligations. And so, with our current contract, uh, we talked to Mr. Limtako about himself just paying it and, and it, the way our contract is, he says, no, he can't do that. He would have to give us the money and then we would have to make arrangements to pay it. And so, that's not a problem. That's not a problem for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Major. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Amanda Shelton, do you have any questions for the panel?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the last question the author just asked, that's, that was one of my questions. But I wanted to discuss, uh, further the comments that you made during, uh, in the testimony from DOC about the public defender's office having the funding and having one place for it all, since, uh, the author did mention that the public defender's office was opposed to this and having it with DOC. Are there any thoughts from you keeping it within the department?
Well, Senator, again, I think if you just made it to the public defenders, remember, you got the alternate public defenders, then you got the public defenders, then you're going to have possibly private attorneys that are court-appointed, right, that might want this. So, I think keeping it within DOC, all the accounts come to us instead of like three different agencies trying to manage this. Uh, so, again, the way I envisaged it, let's say, an attorney, a private attorney out there is, is appointed to a, by the court to an indigenous inmate. And so, that attorney will probably just write us a letter, hey, uh, DOC, I've been a court-appointed to this client, uh, here's my telephone number that, you know, and then we'll work with Paytel to make the number no charge or, or if, if it was charged, even if the attorney was charged, he would send his bill our, our way and then we would, I guess, process it for payment using the, uh, the, the funds for this, from this law, right? So, it, it'll still go through us and then we, we, we would pay him for those things.
Yeah.
Uh, that way, on his invoice, it'll show what inmate, how much, how much minutes, and so, we'll have some data so that later on, if we need to go back and revisit this and see if it's working or we have some data to work with. Uh, if we give it to public defenders, we won't be in the loop, so we really wouldn't know what's taking place and, and again, the, uh, the alternate, the public defenders, ultimately, and then the private attorneys, there'll be, I, I don't know, maybe it's just too many people to, to work with. I, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, good. I'm glad that we're all on the same page, we were able to work through that, at, at least for now, that'll, that'll be the solution for right now and we'll see, uh, as time goes on, how effective that is. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Perez, do you have any question for the panel, ma'am?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just, I just want to, I guess, a couple of questions to verify costs and revenues. So, according to the, um, the terms of this contract, that DOC will receive fifteen percent for non-coin of calls and I believe of five percent or ten percent for the coin-operated calls. So, you were mentioning earlier that, is that correct, first of all?
Yeah, yes, Senator. Again, this original contract was developed more than fifteen years ago when we first got the system. We do not have any coin-operated payphones in the, in the system at this time. There's, all the, all the phones are prepaid, you know, they, you have to go online and get an account. There is no coin-operated system.
Yeah.
And so, based on that, it's fifteen percent, um, after, I guess, Paytel deducts all their expenses, right? And so, uh, again, I don't have the actual check, but I believe when we talked to our ASO, the last check we received was about nine thousand dollars and that goes into our corrections revolving fund. And so, I, and I guess, from that revolving fund, we would turn it up and, and pay the attorney fees when the bill comes to us, you know, when we verify, right? So...
Is that quarterly, you said, or monthly?
Quarterly, quarterly, Senator, yes.
Okay. And then you're mentioning you receive, or, uh, there were two thousand phone calls a day.
When I ran the report on the system a couple of weeks ago, just to see how many phone calls went out of the system, we had over two thousand phone calls a day. That, again, tho- those are not to attorneys, that, that's not, that's just the whole system, everybody calling their families and it's, some could include their attorneys, but we, yeah, we, it, there's, there's, I mean, if each inmate is allowed a minimum of, uh, you know, a phone call's twenty minutes, so if they use sixty minutes, that's three phone calls per inmate per day. And if all five hundred of them call their family three times a day, uh, you can imagine the volume of phone calls that are going out of that facility, uh, out of that facility.
And so, of the population, you know, you said, you mentioned earlier, you're still, there's, there's no really definite, or the court defines who's indigent. Um, do you have an estimate of how much of the inmate population, detainee population are indigent?
Uh, you know, for the, I, I don't know about that, you know, um, the indigenous inmates, who are or who not, but I think a, a easy way to identify them is just who's a, who's being represented by the public defender and the alternate public defender and who's got a court-appointed attorney. And, and I think that would, to me, that would be an easy way just to identify, you know, and, and let's say the, uh, the four seven five thirty one hundred for the public defender, uh, number, that's the number that's going to be free, that's the number that when we get the bill, that's the number we pay. And anyone, any inmate that calls that, basically, you know, uh, is free because most of my inmates, Senators, they don't, once they become sentenced, only a few of them, when they're appealing their case, may have an attorney. The rest, uh, the rest of them, um, uh, you know, or have an attorney when they're a detainee. Uh, the other one that we may get also to think about is the federals. So, the federal detainees, uh, don't call the alternate public defender, or some of them do have a, but most of them have a federal, uh, public defender. So, we may want to look if we're going to include that number also free for federal detainees, I don't know, because most of them will call the, uh, John Gorman, Attorney Gorman and, and, and so, we've had a few of them, you know, say they don't have any money, especially if they're from off-island or they've been, they've been transferred to Guam temporarily pending another transfer. So, that's something else we may need to look at is, uh, do we include the federal public defenders as a free phone call, too?
So, but right now, your estimate is about four hundred dollars a month?
No, for the federal public, no, there, we only have thirty people in our prison right now that are under federal custody. We only have about thirty. So, it's, it's not, it's not a great number. So, you know, even if we were to go up to five hundred every month, I don't think it's a huge amount to estimate. But again, uh, I see a decrease on the attorney phone calls because most attorneys now are coming in. Even the federal public defenders and them, they're, they're starting to come in a lot, a lot more. So, there's a lot less, uh, phone calls.
Okay. So, I guess the upshot is that since potentially can get, uh, the revenues that you get is roughly about nine thousand, but then you're estimating a monthly cost of about five hundred dollars, so that could definitely cover.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Moynihan, do you have any question for the panel?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation as well. So, the bill is, again, I know we got into, uh, other explanations about how we're using this Paytel phone system, which is very helpful for my understanding and how secure the department has been using this system and how it's helped reduce the amount of illegal activity within the prison and how, how the officers are able to monitor and catch things and prevent, prevent, uh, issues within the department. So, it seems like a very safe system, this Paytel system that you have had for over fourteen years now and has been working successfully for the Department of Corrections. And I think you clearly identified that the money, this fifteen percent from the net revenues is more than enough to generate, uh, the minimum amount of funds necessary for the indigent inmates to call their, um, attorneys, which is what this bill is, is really focused on. Uh, I understand you support, or Department of Corrections supports the, the measure. And I just want to ask you, how, how, how important is it to get this bill passed into law and how soon do you need it? Can you delay this as much to look for other things? Maybe there's other, uh, answers we can give or is, or the way is, this bill is being presented to you and the funding source that is identified and you're also looking at the amount of money for this, uh, issue which we're addressing in the bill to even be reduced, how quickly would it be helpful for you to get this bill passed into law?
Well, Senator, um, of course, when it comes to in-mating rights, you know, it's always critical that we respond to it as soon as possible. Uh, the other factor also is that, um, we've been communicating with the public defender's office, the alternate public defender's office, and they've brought some issues regarding it. And, uh, you know, we've had, uh, judge, uh, hearings with the judges regarding this issue. So, it has been, uh, a burden on Department of Corrections to respond to these court hearings and, uh, order to show cause. We've been, I think, uh, two or three times, we've had this issue brought to the court. So, it would lessen the burden from, of us if we get this done as soon as possible. And in, in the matter of just, you know, moral obligation, I guess, we, you know, when we look at this, we, we always want to ensure that they have equal rights under the law or equal opportunities under the law. So, yes, I think it is, uh, an important, it's, it is important that we get it passed as soon as we, we can.
Thank you very much for the explanation. I hope we can expedite this process for you and for the department.
All right.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you. Senator Moynihan, Senator Yanis, no questions. Senator Torres, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, I just want to, uh, comment that the, the bill as proposed is very sensible. It, it, when you, when you look at the, the fiscal note and the comments made by the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, presently, there is no way for them to trace exactly the revenues that are, uh, collected into the general fund just based on the AS400 financial system. Correct, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, Senator, good morning. That's correct.
Okay. I was just wondering, though, and, and so, it makes sense that this now will give us a, um, a gauge of what that actually is. But, uh, to, to the committee, to the panel, it also notes that there is a way to estimate what that, uh, collection can be, the, the total cost of the program, um, by applying a formula of four hundred per inmate a month multiplied by the total amount of inmates. So, how much are we looking at generally for this contract price or, or the, the purchase of the, um, of the system or the, of the usage of the system? Do we have an approximate revenue or, or what, what, how much they generate?
I think in answer to Senator Titegui, the DOC confirmed that, that they get about nine thousand dollars a quarter from, you know, and this is funded by calls that are going through the, through the system.
Yeah, that, and that's the, um, that's the commission on the, because I was looking, I was looking at the...
That, that's the fees that get generated by the company. So, the capture would be fifteen percent of that.
Okay. And nine thousand is the fifteen percent?
Is per quarter, yes.
Okay. All right. The other question I had that's maybe not related to this bill, although I support this bill, is, is the, is this, uh, contract based on the contract that was signed in two thousand and four? I know there were purchase orders in twenty twenty, but, but is the two thousand and four contract the carryover contract for this company?
Um, actually, I, I think not. I, I think that contract needs to be revisited. I mean, we have a number of contracts that are kind of hangover continuing contracts. This one, because of its nature, doesn't require peer procurement, but I think it, as you probably agree, that it needs to be revisited and renewed.
That, that would be my other, uh, comment. It doesn't affect the bill necessarily. I stand in support of the bill and I think it's a very sensible approach to it. But, but looking at the nature of the contract and the fact that it was done in two thousand and four and things have changed dramatically since then in terms of technological progress and cost efficiencies that can be realized, um, I, I would highly suggest that that be an action item on, on your part also, Mr. Byrne, because two thousand and four was a very long time ago and four thousand dollars, I mean, four hundred dollars a month per inmate, um, is more than what I, you know, what an average person would pay for a whole bundled package, um, in, in a home, for example. So, I, I just want to make that comment about cost efficiencies and whether we're, in fact, realizing best use of our, um, of our, our money or best use of, of our contracting dollar and whether we can get commissions in excess of what we do right now. You, you, you're free to comment further.
Yes, Senator. Thank you, Senator Torres. Uh, Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel? Thank you.
Uh, yes, and thank you to the panel for being here and for, um, answering the questions at the public hearing. Neither DOC nor DOA were there, so this is very helpful and I'm glad that you are here. Uh, I echo the concern of the previous speaker regarding the contract. It seems to be expired and it's, but I'm hearing that you're continuing under this contract, but it's a, and I had asked at the public hearing whether, when you renegotiate your contract, you can just include such terms that, um, you know, as we have seen, that if, that the calls between, you know...
Yes.
Certain, uh, indigent...
Right.
Clients that, that they be as part of the contract, free.
Yes, as, as a note, ma'am, uh, last year, of course, our system was down, uh, early last year, it broke down, it was crashed. So, we, the vendor had to go and looked at, at a new system to replace it because that, there was no way to repair that system. So, we had to reach out to GSA and GSA helped us to navigate through that procurement So we had to reach out to GSA, and GSA helped us to navigate through that procurement process and looking at what was existing. And so they helped us manage to renew that contract with Ms. Claudia at the GSA. The other thing I wanted to mention is that they told us that there are, in order for them to recover from the expenses, because of course, this technology is, you know, up to date, and, you know, they didn't expect to recover from their losses until maybe a year to possibly two years because of the cost of buying the new equipment and the new technology. So it was, the way they were seeing it is that they were willing to work with us. I know GSA had reached out to other vendors to see if they were, was there viability of them bidding on that process. And from what we understand from GSA, that no one was able to do what they're doing today.
Okay, so there was a procurement, you're saying, and you have a new arrangement.
Right.
But we're looking at a contract that talks about a 15% commission on net revenues. This is a 2004 contract. Are we still looking at this, or is there another contract we should be looking at?
It was just a renewal, I believe.
I see. Okay.
Yes, Senator, so again, because the system went down, like, it just crashed everything, and because it was an old system, it couldn't be repaired. And you can imagine the 2,000 phone calls going out of that prison or more unmonitored, unchecked, and all the security issues we were having. We even saw influx of contraband. I mean, it was just getting really ridiculous, and we couldn't even find out where it was coming from. And we worked with GSA, and they called a couple vendors on island, I think Dokomo and some of the other phone companies, if they were able to provide such services, because we were trying to go out on maybe a possible RFP. But no other vendor could provide what we were requesting for. So this contract, I believe, is five years, but we expect in the next two years or maybe three to put the system back up for RFP. So we're going to open a new RFP, and then that's when we can relook at what was given to us and address all these other issues as they come up. So we are planning that. We are already, I mean, I'm already working on the specs for that, for the next system.
All right.
When we put it up for proposals.
Okay. And I'm glad that the company did afford you services during, after the system crashed and allowed that the calls were free for that period and went out of their way to make sure.
Yeah, the company was very, because, you know, when the system went down, Senator, again, the switch that made all these phones go through the pay tell system, the phone, he turned it off, and every single phone just became basically a regular
Yes.
landline. But Mr. Lintaco was, he absorbed all the fees and the pay, the 911, and all those calls was absorbed at his cost. He didn't charge us anything until we got the new system running again and tried to get back to some normacy on the phone calls.
Can I just ask, what did you do prior to the crash? Prior to the crash, who paid for the indigent phone calls?
No, no, Senator. Prior to the crash, inmates were allowed to use the control phone. And it was that system where they go up and, you know, "Sir, I need to call my attorney."
Okay, so even prior to the crash?
That was prior to the crash, because they didn't, well, some may have used the pay tell, but a lot of attorneys did not, because we had no way of having the system do not record. It was an older system, and we couldn't do that. Most of the time, they would use the control phone, and that's where we had it to some problems and with attorneys. And so attorney would say, "Hey, I need to speak to my client like now." And we're like, "I'm sorry, Senator, we're in the middle of, I mean, sorry, Attorney, we're in the middle of a chow. We have to call you back later, and we would have to..." But now, they can just go pick up the phone, as long as it's available, dial in the number, and they can speak to their attorney if the attorney is available.
Okay, can you just clarify? You said about 450 per month, but in the testimony, it says per inmate. Is it per inmate or?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I misspoke. It's per month for the whole, not per inmate.
Okay.
It's not per inmate.
All right.
The report that we got back, when we did this two-month pilot program, I think it was January to March, we identified certain key numbers, and we said, "Okay, these numbers will be free." So every time the inmate dialed the 475-3100, that number would be free. If they called another number, they'd been charged their own account. But they called that number, it was free. And when the pilot program was done, Mr. Lintaco sent us the data, and it showed about 400-some, maybe 450, give or take, that of worth of phone calls were made to that, those numbers, that were identified as being free.
Okay, now that correction makes everything more consistent now. Okay, so now that makes sense?
Sorry.
Thank you. But what about, then, does the public defender, if they initiate the call, are they going to be the ones paying the cost?
So what happens, Senator, is that, no, if an attorney, if the public defender, they do, okay, these phone calls do not, these pay tell systems do not receive phone calls. You cannot call into the phone. So attorney will have to call the housing unit and says, "Hey, Officer so-and-so, this is Attorney Attori. Can I speak to my client?" We would tell the client, "Please go to the phone and call your attorney right now," right? And they'll get in there and they'll call their attorney. We don't let the attorney and the client speak now. If the inmate don't have an account, then we'll make other arrangements. We'll say, "Attorney, we will call you back from another, and we will get the inmate to another area." The officer will dial the number and says, "This is Officer so-and-so for Attorney so-and-so. His client is here," and then we would give the phone to the, just to make sure that it is who's calling. And so in the past, attorneys could call in on the landline. "This is Attorney so-and-so, I need to speak to my client." And the officer would hand the phone to the inmate. But we found that they were playing with the system, and it was more hanky-panky than sometimes the attorneys, you know, were not calling. And so that's one reason why we stopped it, plus COVID. I didn't want officers sharing the line with the inmates because of COVID and other security issues.
Okay. No, I appreciate the benefits of this system and for your purposes, for security especially, and then that it will afford the confidentiality required with the attorneys. It's great, the way you've described it. So I have no objection to the system and anything about it, I'm just clarifying, you know, the changes that we're making today. So one of them is that we're going, this bill removes your income that you've been getting, this 15% commission on net revenues, currently, you said, is going into your Corrections Revolving Fund. And this bill says it's going to go into a new fund and that it's going to be used to provide these no-cost telephonic services for inmates. But what I'm afraid of is we're taking all of the money that you currently receive. It's $9,000 a quarter versus the amount you actually need for the indigent calls, right? And we're restricting it for these purposes when you've been using this money for other purposes. And when I looked at that Corrections Revolving Fund, it says things like, you know, clothing, stuff for the gallery, the galley, rather, the food items and things like this. And so you had a little bit of a discretion how to use that. You're supposed to be posting on the website how you use this money.
Right.
And so I just wanted to know, do you want all the money to go into this Inafet Malik for inmates fund? That would be the 9,000 per quarter and to be dedicated for these purposes, the no-cost telephonic services for inmates or detainees?
Senator, what we're hoping for is that we are able to pay the indigent inmates and keep the rest so that we can continue with our operations. And, you know, of course, you know, that it's quite costly, you know, with all the different areas we're talking about, the food services, inmate clothing, and all these other factors with running the prison. So we do hope that we do keep that, you know, the difference, yes.
Would you be able, under your current authority, under the Corrections Revolving Fund, to use what you need for indigent phone costs?
Well, that's what we're hoping, that this bill will help us, give us that authority to process that document so we can pay the bill.
Okay, so you think that you're not authorized to do that with your, with the Corrections Revolving Fund right now?
Not the current status. We don't have that authority to use the pay tells funds to pay for the indigent program.
Okay, so what have you been using it for?
What have you been using, the $9,000?
Yes.
Yeah, to pay for all the different things from food services.
Okay, so by what authority? And you're saying you can pay all those things, but you can't pay phone services? So we need to add phone services into that?
Yes, that's correct.
And Mr. Byrne, do you control the Corrections Revolving Fund? Or is that controlled only at the Department of Corrections?
Senator, good morning. Now, the DOC Inmates Revolving Fund is the title. It's part of the general fund and can be found on page 149 of the financial statements.
Okay, I'm looking at 9GCA 90.49. It says Corrections Revolving Fund. So what is the Inmates Revolving Fund? Is that different than what I described? These are for purposes?
Yeah, this is the correct title. But as you'll note, Senator, there's a deficit on that fund at September 2020. So it really couldn't be used for anything. The reason for that deficit was the backlog in recoveries from the federal government for federal prisons being housed at our detention facility. There has been a great improvement on those recoveries during 2021. So that will go a long way to making up that deficit.
All right. Were you able to track that the revenues from the commission on this phone contract were going into that fund as well?
Were we to receive any, they would have done under the old arrangement, but we haven't received any for the last two years.
He just testified that they received 9,000 just recently?
Back in November or so.
Pardon?
Back in November or so, I believe, somewhere around that time.
November 2020?
Yes.
My staff tell me we haven't received any for the last two years.
Yeah, you know, that's what BBMR said at the hearing, and so I was hoping somebody could clarify that today. Where is that money going, Deputy Director Camacho?
What do you mean?
Where is that money deposited?
The Corrections Revolving Fund. That's what we understand. That's what I got from my ASO.
Okay. Are you familiar with the Inmates Revolving Fund? Is that a different account, or are we treating them the same?
I think it's one of the same.
I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with that.
That's the information I have. I mean, as for the basis of your question, should we set up a separate fund for this particular purpose? Because wherever the revenues come from, the Inmates Revolving Fund has a deficit, the revenues wouldn't be available to meet the purpose of the bill. So it is better, even though, you know, it's not a good idea to have a whole lot of special funds, but in this particular case, I would certainly support that fund.
Okay. And I don't have any objection, except that the rest of, you know, between your need for 400 a month and the 9,000 that you're receiving, whatever you don't use on phone services, is pretty much going to be tied up. Isn't that right, according to the language of this bill?
Yes, Senator.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, we will now proceed to the second round. If you have any possible amendments, start sending it through. Because immediately after the second round, I will release the, dismiss the panel. We'll proceed right into the amendments. Senator Clinton, do you have any questions, sir? Second round. None? Senator July, any questions in the second final round?
Mr. Chair, I just want to use my time to, the next one.
You don't have any questions? Okay. So Senator Blas, none? Senator Brown, none? Madam Vice Speaker, none? Senator Perez, anything? Senator Duñez, none? Senator Torres, do you have any follow-up question? None? Madam Speaker, do you have questions? This is the final round.
Yes, I wanted to ask. So at the public hearing, the public defender also made some other suggestions as to ways to do this that they thought would be very cost efficient. And I guess these are things, and I want, you know, it ties in with, when is that contract going to be renewed? We were thinking if you were going to be renewing it. So it's already been renewed, I guess. Mr. Byrne, you're going to have to check into that. But one of their suggestions was that the DOC set up a giant Wi-Fi hub to put 10 Facebook portals that cost 150 each in their current visitation center. And then they can allow at least video visitation with their family members and with their attorneys. And once you pay for the internet and you pay for these, they're $180 each. They say, "These are the ones we use when we are kinds of here at court from our office, and so it's secure enough for court, but we're trying to get there." I don't know, I guess that's their ideal or more ideal situation.
Let me begin first. Of course, ma'am, those are convenience, you know, for the public defenders. But we have to understand that this is a prison with security issues. We cannot, if we give an inmate an iPad or what have you, what they're, I mean, sometimes the inmates might break it, they might hit somebody with it, there's so many other issues. Then, of course, monitoring it. Who's going to monitor it? Who's going, and we don't have that luxury of having an officer stand by with, you know, the iPad and teaching them, "How do you use this?" And, you know, these are the issues that we're talking about. It all sounds good. And another thing is, you know, we even had an issue of bringing those MiFi's into the facility, and it doesn't work. It's not strong enough, especially with the walls that we have, right? So those things were considered, but it was just not viable. And maybe Major Augen can say a few things.
Yes, Senator. So under our current phone system, right, this phone system is a phone system, phone system designed for prisons, right? This company has several of them in all several prisons. But it also has the capability in the future to tap on what we call video visitation, using these screens that are mounted on the wall, that can be mounted in the housing units. And inmates can use these in the future. Now, what we're doing now is just a phone system. But in the future, I want to use, and again, if we had that money, maybe that extra money can be going used to future growing our system to help pay for some of the, to grow our system so that we can do this video visitation and other formats for the attorney. The idea from the, the public, Mr. Attori, was I commend them on it. But logistically, you know, giving us nine Facebook portals, and then we're going to have it stacked up, and then we're going to call the inmate down, and we're going to set up the inmate, and we're going to give it to the inmate, and the, you know, possible damaging and all these different things. And then if I have five inmates in there, I got to set up five locations for them to talk with earphones, and they're just not secure. They're just not secured. So, and then my question was, okay, so what if a private attorney wants to use that? Can I use it for them? I mean, you guys bought it. You know, what if there are other attorneys that, you know, do we have to have each attorney bring their own laptop and give us our laptops? So logistically, it was going to be a challenge. And again, that was during the height of the COVID. And now that the COVID, and we've got 400-some inmates vaccinated, and, you know, we're hopefully go back in a few months to a little bit more normal operation. I don't think we need that as much as maybe back then. But in the future, though, with our system, when we do the new RFP, one of my plan is to try to grow the system to include visitation and other things so that, a good thing with that is, let's say, a family member's off island. They can log into the system, and we can have a video visitation for a family member off island just right there, right? And in a secure correction material-type tablet that's designed for prisons. And so that's something we want to look into the future. So maybe if we did create this fund specifically where all this money goes, in the future, any extra money may be going to help pay for that next step in the technology so that we can grow the system and minimize the cost to inmates and their families for these services. I mean, you know, there's other things we can do with that fund. Inmate needs to speak to his mom off island, and, you know, maybe we can look at tapping that money to pay for that cost for that family member to talk. I mean, there's just so many other things we can do in the future.
Thank you very much. That makes absolute sense. So I want to thank you for that. And thank you for saying that you considered all of those proposals. We couldn't tell from the public hearing, because, as I said, DOC wasn't there, DOA wasn't there. So I'm just, that's all I want to hear, is that you vetted every idea possible and that these are the best ideas that we can come forward with right now. So I appreciate that. I think we can look, Mr. Chair, ways to verify between this indigent revolving fund and this corrections revolving fund, make sure that the money that's coming in, I don't know, we have to, that this tracks with DOA. Who actually has possession of the funds? It's Government of Guam, DOA?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, all right. And then, and just, yeah, if, I'm looking forward to your renegotiations in the future to, and your determination of what is best needed and use of these funds, so.
Well, hopefully, Senator, if we get that new prison, all of that will be included in our grounds. So we won't have, in five years, we won't have to wait. We can have that done a lot sooner, because that's what we kind of want in our new buildings, to have all that technology as part of our process. So hopefully, we won't have to work five years to get those things going.
Or at least to plan for it, because
Yes.
technology is going to change, right?
Yes.
Infrastructure, I agree. All right. Well, thank you again to the panel. Thank you for all your work during this pandemic. I was very glad to see the Department of Corrections in the media, constantly informing the public as to what was happening up there. I thought there was time very scary. So thank you again for all your work. Thank you, Mr. Byrne, for your testimony today.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, that ended the two rounds. We will now thank the panels for being here, Mr. Uggan, Mr. Camacho, and Mr. Byrne, and also Mr. Guerrero. And we'll proceed to the introduction of amendments. But we'll give it a couple of minutes, so the panel will, thank you, thank you for all coming today. We really appreciate your, your testimony. All right, my colleagues, we are now in the portion of the amendment. We have two amendments that are on the record. Let me double-check. I only see, I only see two, and we will begin, and they're both introduced by the author of the bill. We'll begin with the first one, which identifies page one. Madam Vice Speaker, if you could please?
See, just, I see, Madam. Mr. Chair, thank you for giving me this opportunity. Both amendments are on the drive, so the first one would be on page one, and it's to make sure that we change the name of the act. And so it, so if I can read it, an act to add a new section 90.300 to chapter 90 of Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to granting indigent inmates the ability to acquire their constitutional right to legal representation, creating the, then delete the Inafamalik for inmates and put inmate phone access fund, semicolon, and to cite this act as the Inmate Phone Access Act of 2021.
And also to address that on, on that same amendment, you have the changing anywhere where it says Inafamalik for inmates to reflect inmate phone access, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Does any of my colleagues would like to speak on that amendment? I'm looking across, I see no hands. Are there any objections to the amendment? There being none? Amendment passes. Moving on to your next amendment, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, this second amendment is to make sure that the representation is only for the indigent community. So from page two, lines 22 and 23, page two, 26, lines 26 and 31, and then that's the same pages, line 33 through four. So to add the words indigent in front of inmates or detainees. So let me read it. Any, any revenue that is deposited into said account is to be used to provide no-cost telephonic services for indigent inmates or indigent detainees to contact their legal counsel. And then on line 26 and 31, should revenues deposited into this fund not be adequate to provide no-cost telephone services for indigent inmates to contact the legal counsel? The Director of the Department of Corrections and Imago Lahe in Guam shall ensure that any indigent inmate or indigent detainee be provided their constitutional right to counsel, to counsel, to consult legal counsel through no-cost telephonic services by any means by the Director of Imago Lahe in Guam sees fit. And then, lengths 33 through four on pages two and three, be notwithstanding any other provisions of law, the Director and the Department of Corrections shall, within 30 days of the passage of this measure, create the, and implement a policy where indigent inmates shall be allowed to call the Public Defender Service Corporation or the alternate public defender or their attorney of record at no cost to the indigent inmate. The Director of the Department of Corrections shall report to Elessa Tooten upon the creation and enactment of said policy. That's, that's the amendment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Does any of my colleagues like to speak on that amendment, on those amendments? Senator Frank Blas, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if the author of the amendment, as well as the author of the legislation, yield to a question on whether or not indigent is defined in the legislation for the purposes of clarifying what we mean by indigent. I, I remember in the conversation that we had with the panel, that there was a, there was a question with regard to that. I just wanted to make sure that there is no, I guess, confusion on what we interpret or what we intend indigent to be. If she can yield.
All right. Then I ask the author of the bill if, if she could.
I hope this helps, Mr. Chair, I'll try. But the word indigent is defined by the courts, so the interpretation of indigent has been included in statute, so if you want.
I just want to make sure, because then also included in statute is the definitive indigent being of the land. So I just wanted to make sure that it's defined by the court. Again, it's, 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 wanting to make sure 20 years down the road, this is not misinterpreted to mean otherwise. I understand and I, I do, I do support that it does, you know, that it does say indigent, it's just that we want to make sure. And.
Julie noted, sir.
All right, so.
I.
Again, I have no, I have no objection to the amendment. I just wanted to make sure that in, in, in spirit of the amendment and the intent of it is that we make sure that we include the definition of indigent, because it had become an issue.
All right, because I understand.
Sir, if there is a motion to add the word, the definition of indigent to that, I have no objection.
I have no objection to that either.
Okay.
So again, he can amend the amendment to include the.
Why don't we do this? For the purposes of moving this along. Let me, let me get with legal counsel, see where the best place to be able to do this, and I'm sure somewhere during the line we can, okay?
All right, and then we'll leave that for the legal, but are there any objections?
No, no objections.
In the discussion? Okay, none? So, does any other colleague would like to speak to that? And then we would ask the legal to take the, the necessary steps to make the corrections, whatever needed to be put on the bill. Would anybody, would any other colleague would like to speak to this amendment? There being none. Are there any objections to the amendment but subject to legal counsel providing the appropriate, I guess, verbiage that's needed on the bill? None? Okay, there, are there any objections? Madam Speaker, you're looking, you're waiting for them to wave you down, right?
Is it to allow legal counsel to, so then the additional amendment would be allow legal counsel?
I will work with legal counsel on that and I will proffer that amendment, sir, to make it.
All right, okay. Okay, so on the amendment, are there any objections to the amendment?
No objection.
No objection, amendment passes. There are, you're gonna, Senator Frank, you're gonna, you're gonna work with legal if there's anything that needs to be changed, but other than that, we can move forward with the bill. Am I correct? Thank you, Senator Blas. That being said, Madam Vice Speaker, you have a motion to make right at this point, not to rise, but a motion on this bill.
Sir, I don't think I can move to rise because there's a proposed.
No, no, there's no, there's no motion, it's not to rise, it's for the bill to be. Okay, so why don't we go ahead, it's 12 o'clock, why don't we take a recess?
To two?
Come back at 1:30. I'm just trying to give enough time, unless there's an objection, want to move it to two? Two o'clock, okay, we'll make it two o'clock. I have advised already all the other panel for Bill 121 to be back here between 1:30 and two, so that gives a lot of room for them to be here. And that being said, and then we'll be able to settle Bill 99 and then for your motion that, okay?
So motion to recess until?
Until two o'clock, okay?
On the motion, sir?
We will recess till two o'clock, thank you.